Good evening and welcome to the HUUSD School Board Meeting for May 14th. Sorry, I'm adjusting my sound to be quiet. We have a few board members missing. We're going to call the board meeting to order at 6:05 for Carol. We are missing a few people. They, there are very valid reasons, I'm sorry to say, but we have, only have a board meeting, board members here right now. Lisa, did you sign up for public comment? Okay, there's no one. I can't, okay. Are we ready? Is there anyone?
We don't have a quorum, we can get that.
We have a quorum.
We have a quorum.
There are no attendees.
Okay. There are no attendees in Zoom and there's no one here for public comments, so we are going to move forward to approve the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Ben, it's Bobby, second. All those in favor? Aye. Okay. We will go first to board reports. Did everyone get a chance to read the leadership report? Because it didn't come out till yesterday. I apologize for that. I had a busy week. The leadership report, I didn't get that out. If any, does anyone have any questions about the leadership report? Okay. Then we'll leave that. Dr. Mike is next with the superintendent's report.
I don't have a written report for the first meeting. I do that in the second meeting. And we are back from spring break and we are in May and getting close to the end of the year. We are just a little over, a little over a month from graduation. Actually, actually graduation is a month from today, am I right? Celia and Ellie, it's the 14th. But 14th is graduation and the 18th will be our last day of school. And I'm happy to take any questions.
I have some new board members here, so if you have any questions for Dr. Mike, you can ask them. No? Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Ben.
Do we recognize graduating seniors at the graduation?
The board has traditionally recognized graduating seniors who have been the board reps at the last meeting they attend. But...
I'm going to hand you your diplomas. Something special for your, your cap. Yeah, you should definitely get that. Celia, last year, Poppy was the last person and I gave her her diploma, so. We'll, we'll work on that. Something, something silly for Ellie in the final moments. I'm sure you're going to make it extra special, Ellie. I can feel it. Okay. We have a CFO report. Lisa, if she wants to give a CFO report? Hold on, everybody.
They asked. They received a Zoom link. Emily did not.
Did you receive a Zoom link, Pam?
HU.
In it, yeah, in HUUSD. For today. Hmm, okay.
Just a second, I'll send you their email address to make sure you have them. The new board members said they didn't get the...
New board member said they didn't get the Zoom email for the board meeting.
No. Okay. They are working on something. How about we go to the students? Use your mic. Actually. All right, once it comes back, we can, can you, can I? Can somebody throw their thing up there? Put the kids' thing up. Can you share the students and then we'll double back for Lisa? We'll let the students go and then you go. You were very busy. Students are going, we're going to go out of order on the agenda and the students are going to give us their report. Yeah, can you start to back it up a little?
Alrighty, everyone. Welcome back. Student report. All right, we can go to the next slide. Yep. Last week was Teacher Appreciation Week. Make sure to thank your teachers, everyone. They make the world go round. All right, next slide. Last week was also Healthcare Worker and Nurse Appreciation Week. Make sure to thank your nurses and healthcare workers. All right, next slide.
Right, so, it's not what the slideshow looks like for me.
Yeah. Yeah. Our transitions...
Oh, yeah. All right, so we have Spirit Week coming up at Harwood, which is next week. Every day we'll have a different dress-up theme and event. Each class chose a theme, so the freshmen are a tropical theme, the sophomores are paparazzi, the juniors are LeBron James, and the... It's, it's, it's a, it's a long, long story. And the seniors are Y2K. So there will be, like, the whole, the whole week will be, like, different events will be happening every day. We're going to decorate the hallways, you make a mural based on what your theme is, a music video based on what your theme is, and then... Spirit Week's a big thing. Uh, yeah.
Well, and I have to comment, I have to comment that at the senior, or the assembly yesterday, Grady was the, the live model, modeled all of the outfits that people were to wear. Very quickly, a quick change, too.
Yeah. Those pants were very hot. Um, it's also when Battle of the Bands happened. Oh, yeah?
I, I'm a little curious as to why LeBron James is so at school, because my middle schooler seems to also be obsessed and I don't even think he's always...
It's a, it's an internet thing. I don't know exactly why he became so popular, but he became pop, because, because he's the GOAT. He just became very popular and greatest of all time. Anyway, anyway, a lot of other stuff happens during, what is going on? Okay, also today was the, yeah, we had the HPV clinic today outside of Harwood. It was a joint effort between the Harwood, it says outside! The joint effort with our Harwood nurses and UVM Medical Center, so that's great. I, oh, this, this is the middle school walkathon. So we also have the middle school walkathon coming up, which I don't know a whole bunch about. Ellie can talk about it.
It is happening the Thursday of Spirit Week and it is for Spirit Points. It's actually happening tomorrow, I lied. And it's for Spirit Points and these, if, you can't really see, but donations, there are also being donations happening and donations are going to the UK, Ukraine Children's Aid Fund, for the love of dogs, Vermont, and the Ocean Conserv, Conservis. Okay. Yes, thank you.
And then, I've got one more thing that's not up there. There's also the Feast Summit coming up, which will be on our next, like, next time we have a board meeting, but there's no student report then. It's, it's a, like, a sustainability event at Flatbred in Waitsfield and, yeah.
Spring sports update. Spring sports are in full swing, get it? Both varsity lacrosse teams are dominating while the rain has stunted the baseball and softball games. The games are fully active, oh, the teams are fully active. Varsity Track and Field has their state meet coming up on June 6th. About half on the team has already qualified for the at 1-2 HU.
That's exciting. Almost half the team, the track team is qualified for states, which is exciting, and Ellie just told us about it, but she didn't turn the mic on, so I'm just sharing with, down there. But that's really cool. Thank you. All right, anything else?
Celia and I went to the State House.
Yeah, so on the Friday before break, Ellie and I went and we gave testimony to the Education House Committee about the bill H54. And, yeah, Ellie, it went, it went really well. We were there with Meg McDonough and, oh, Dr. Mike.
That's a really good picture. Who took it?
Oh, Dr. Mike took this photo. Creds to Dr. Mike, photo creds to Dr. Mike. Yes. Next slide, please, Cindy. Also, Celia and I are both going to UVM. Go Cats, go! Was also your favorite representative, Celia and Ellie's birthdays! We're 18! Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for that extra spirited report and congratulations on choosing UVM and on being 18. Use it well. Be careful out there. To the CFO report. CFO?
Um, just an update, oh, sorry. Okay, just an update. We went out to bid recently for our oil, our fuels, oil and propane and wood chips and also our tan tax anticipation note. Those are due back on May 30th. It's in, in my report, but just a quick overview, due back on May 30th and I'll present them on the June 11th, the results on June 11th board meeting. We also went out for our copier bid. We had, our copier contract had ended, the early, it's ending this August, so we went out early spring. We work with a purchasing consortium, specialized purchasing consultant corp, SP, SPC Group, and they're a consortium for purchasing. They work with school districts in Vermont, Maine, and New Hampshire. About 45% of Vermont's school districts use them and it's where we can go out to bid with a large, large quantities and to be able to have some cost efficiencies. Currently, we have 115 devices between copiers and printers. For our next bid, we actually were able to, looking at some of our use and, you know, auditing the use of all of these devices, we were able to reduce most of those devices down to 64 units. So there's going to be a cost savings. We actually had five vendors submit bids and we are recommending, currently we have, we, we use Cosir, Cosir, and we are recommending to move forward with National, who is our current vendor. We are looking at a cost savings of 165,000, 165,148.25 in terms of cost savings over five years. It's over $33,000 savings each year. There were other vendors with slightly higher cost savings. Unfortunately, what we're recommending is going with National because they've served us, serviced us very well. We've had very little downtime. The other bidders, we had used one of the other bidders in the past and they're based on customers reaching out to other school districts. They had not been happy with their service and the downtime of their equipment. And the other vendor that was in competition with the three that were very close is a very small vendor and would not be able to service all of our, our units, our devices. So we are recommending to go with National. It's still 165, over $165,000 in cost savings over five years, which has helped, which is going to be a little more than I anticipated. I anticipated only a $25,000 savings each year, which was incorporated into the budget, but actually we're going to be achieving 33,829. So that's part of our discussion. So we'll, we'll go over that bid language. I just wanted to also let you know that we received a safety grant award from Visbit. We currently have, all of our schools are equipped with cameras except for Waitsfield. So we went out, got a quote of eight cameras for $7,000, a little over $7,000. We submitted a grant application for, to Visbit for their safety grant and we were awarded the safety grant, so that, that will be covered by the safety grant that we were awarded. I just wanted to update, a quick update, we'll talk about this at discussion, but we're still working on the ARPSR funding that we have not been reimbursed for the first quarter of fiscal year '25, which was the last part of that grant award, which ended September 30th, 2024. I included Ray Diggle's update on facilities. We've had a lot of issues recently with facilities and we'll go over it more in detail next. So I'll continue. So it, a week doesn't go by that I do not get a call from Ray saying there's some type of major issue or something that needs to be addressed immediately. Just to remind everybody, we've had to cut our school contingencies down to $10,000 for the elementary schools and 15,000 and 20,000 for Cross at Brooklyn High School. These are unplanned things that could happen and we have committed extra dollars just in case. Well, those just in case commitments have been exceeding, we're exceeding those just in case. As an example, we had a major issue with our boilers from our wood chips. The piping from our boilers was leaking and we had to bring in, do an emergency repair. I got permission to go out for this emergency repair. We did not have to go out to bid. It ended up only costing $47,000, but the initial quote could have been over 120,000. It depended on how much they had to dig up and excavate to find where the leak was. So that was a major, you know, faux pas that we had to correct immediately. Another issue is we had the septic tanks inspected. We inspect them on an annual basis and we're finding that the septic tanks at the high school are going to have to have a major overhaul and that's over $97,000. We have roots growing into, we've fixed and repaired what we could, but we have roots growing in to the septic. The septic tanks will eventually fail and they'll need to be replaced. So we are looking at, we can squeak by for another year, but it'll be over $100,000. Most likely, right now, we got a quote of roughly 97,000, but most likely it'll be over 100,000. But we will be planning this for next summer as part of the deferred maintenance, but these do need to be addressed. I included a couple of pictures. We recently had a power outage at the high school and it actually, it's an old Western Electric main panel that's years, many, many, many years old. It blew a fuse and it caused a burnout, so that actually then ended up having us to replace some panels and it's a $7,700 fix. But it doesn't, a week doesn't go by without a call saying this has to be done or this has to be done. And we also, just to remind you, we have planned projects and capital maintenance for each of the schools. Then we have a small contingency for unplanned projects and then we have that other contingency, so, but we've been surpassing those contingencies. So these things are, you know, our schools are aging out, we're talking about deferred maintenance and these things are going to start happening. So the TruXCollins assessment is going to be starting over the summer, they're going to be starting very shortly, and then we'll see what those results bring.
We hear people who say, is that a lot of money to spend on an assessment? And our answer, and has been, is no. You know, this district is in great need of work in a number of buildings and this, the examples that Lisa gave, you know, Ray's very experienced, our maintenance staff's very experienced, but they don't have the expertise to be able to go into a building and narrow down all the potential issues like we just discussed. So that's, it just illustrates one of the many reasons why, and number one, we need work, but also we need a thorough and documented assessment from architects and engineers and people with specific knowledge in those areas. Panel was original to the building. I'm looking for the picture.
Western Electric.
Which is no longer a business.
Correct. My father was an engineer for them.
By a bit. 1965. Wow.
And just to let you know about the ARPSR, just to elaborate a little more, we are, we had submitted, again, we, we expended all of the expenses for that award within the project period. What we're looking at doing is trying to be reimbursed for what's called the drawdown, to be reimbursed for those expenses of 501, $406.86, 87 cents, 86 cents, whatever. We have not been reimbursed for that yet. We are working with AOE. We have submitted a liquidation and this is what the feds are telling us we need to do, is can process what's called a liquidation request. This is not a liquidation request for additional funding. This is a process that we have to, to go through to be able to get reimbursed for those expenses that were expended within the project period. We submitted our first liquidation request in February, mid-February. They were then sent back to us because they had a whole change in staff members and they had us redo a whole process. We resubmitted that in March for a liquidation request and now AOE is working with, Senator Sanders' office has offered to help us with these liquidation requests and I'm working with Senator Sanders' office with the second liquidation request that I submitted in terms of the language and then how we can then resubmit a third liquidation request. So I just want to keep the board up to date on that process. We will be working on some additional language to help us to get reimbursed for these expenses. Any questions?
Liquidation process new or is it how it's always been for getting reimbursement?
It's new for reimbursement. So what, there's many districts, there's several districts, not many. Several districts are in the same position. The liquidation process is normally for you want to liquidate funds that you have residual funding and that you want to be able to have an extension to liquidate those funds. For some reason, they're combining this drawdown process of the closure of the grant in with this liquidation process, which is not the normal procedure. Normally, I submit my expenses to AOE. AOE approves the expenses and then they draw down the funding from the feds through the G5 program. But right now, everything's on hold, they're not reimbursing and it's now part of this whole liquidation process. There are some school districts that are asking to liquidate residual funds for a specific project or they could be in the, several, a couple of school districts are in the midst of construction projects that they had not completed, that they got approval for but they had not completed and they still are on hold for those funds as well. So there's many districts in this pickle.
Yeah, ours, we were just waiting for final documentation to submit and it was actually, we were approved to, to turn it in late under the prior administration and then they changed the rules recently. And I also, Lisa, did find, you know, if anyone's just curious what the part looks like that was removed, this is the part, and if you can see, kind of in the center of that screen, you can see a big, yep, so that, that is it, it's in, it's in your report. It was made well, it's just the fact that it's about 58 years old.
But I also just want, I mean, this could have caused a fire. So this is, this is...
We were very fortunate.
We were very fortunate and that it was addressed immediately.
Dan has his hand up.
Lisa, are you confident that we will get that money eventually and it's just delayed? Or is there a level of concern that we may not get it?
There's no telling. I mean, we need that money, we want that money, but I, I can't, there's, there's so many things that are on hold right now and reimbursement. I mean, we, we expended it, we were awarded it, we expended it within the project period. It's not that we expended it beyond September 30th. It's really just drawing down the funds. But with everything going on and then pulling back funding and we just heard that title funding for fiscal year '26 is now on, being reduced temporarily to 80%. So, well, we don't know the final number, they're telling us to rebudget up to 80% only. So, and that's fiscal year '26, which we initially were told we're good for '26 for, for title funding. But now that's in question and we knew fiscal year '27 was definitely questionable, but fiscal year '26, we did not plan on 80%. So Shannon, Leslie and I met today to be able to figure out, she's reworking how she can figure out those numbers.
Received a grant last year, SAMSHA grant, which was through a consortium of schools and other organizations, health organizations in Vermont that provided grants for students who were in need, who had maybe some substance abuse issues. That grant has been revoked, so we're no longer able to participate in that program. So that's just a couple of examples that are numerous throughout the state and the country right now.
Help me understand that more. If, we've already spent this $500,000 and if we don't get it back, where does that money come from?
Our reserve or the general fund. So we've expended that money. We do have a reserve now with a carryforward and it would be expensed against that.
There, there surely has to be some kind of legal challenge to the fact that if you are awarded a grant and you spend said grant and then the grant gets rejected or withdrawn or canceled, you can't be left hanging with the, that seems to be something that I feel like it has to be a, some, something that all states must be dealing with and all local municipalities must be dealing with and all local school districts must be dealing with. So I would have to think that there must be legal challenges that are going to be starting So I would have to think that there must be legal challenges that are going to be starting to pour in here. I also, as a special educator, am thinking, is this touching the special education world as well? Because that's now grant-funded as well. So like, how, how much into education is this touching here in terms of our fiscal years looking ahead?
So at this point, the title grants and the IDEA grants are flow-through grants and they are fine for this current, this upcoming fiscal year. The question's going to be appropriations for fiscal year '17. For this grant, again, I need to emphasize, '27, fiscal year '27, need to emphasize that the grant was awarded. The grant was properly expended in the period for which the award occurred. It was just the record-keeping because we spent money through September 30th and couldn't file a report on September 30th that we needed the extension. So that's the reason. But I can also say, Lisa and I both had conversations with a representative from Senator Sanders' office and he, he is, this is one of his top priorities. We've been assured, in fact, with that person, they've emailed us, they called me, they reached out. I was on another line. He called back again. I called him back. He answered right away. They are, his office has been very attentive and very helpful. And like I said, this is high priority for him to get the money that Vermont is owed.
Okay, before we go back to discussion, which we will, I'm going to have Bobby give us an update from the Outreach Committee.
So the Outreach Committee has reorganized and we feel that it's very important and we keep up the work that we've been doing. And at our first reorg meeting, we had myself, Rebecca Baruzzi, Steve Rosenberg, Cindy and Ashley. And we had some very good discussion about the goals of the committee and ideas for outreach. Shannon Dunphy Convica, actually, and Asher Berg are both community members who are non-voting members of the committee, but have excellent, excellent ideas. And Shannon, we have many Shannons now. Shannon had submitted a document with several ideas that schools have used or that we could use for outreach. And then unfortunately, she then, well, not unfortunately for her, she went on vacation. So we'll be gathering together again when she returns. Also, I think one of the mission, and I think this is important, that we came into existence when the budget failed two years ago and it became very important that we needed to figure out ways to reach the community. You know, so one of our goals is to help. We're still meaning because of the continued financial restraints that we're facing and how it's more important than ever that accurate information gets out to the community, that we stop rumors that could be damaging, that we help people really understand our rationale. A lot of emotional issues coming up as we talk about consolidation. People have allegiance to their small community schools and identity tied up in it. I had the chance this week to visit a couple of schools and it really is true. Our schools represent the heart of our communities in many sense. And, but we still need to continue to consider what is going to be in the best interest of our students to provide the quality of education that we have been providing and figure out the most efficient way to do it and figure out what's going on with our buildings, many of which are aging and have big problems. You'll be hearing about a few more tonight. We have to teach people what's going on, but we don't want to frighten people at the same time. You know, that these are just the realities. What can we do to problem-solve around what's happening in our communities? TruX Collins is going to continue their work throughout the summer in pulling together options and they're going to be looking over this during the summer. Still encourage any members of the community who have ideas of what they think might help to be in touch with us and let us know. One of the nicest things that came out of our meeting was talking about the importance of community engagement. So that we are outreach, but we are also engagement. So that's actually a question I have for you, Ashley. We should probably get that on an agenda to vote on a change of name. Yeah, I hadn't thought of that. Shannon Wisdom is going to decide on some frequently asked questions to haul from the other Shannon's documents that we might be able to include on the website. Asher would like to create a simple webpage about what's happening in the district, nothing too long. So we are very lucky to have community members get involved at this level. And then we talked about renaming the committee. So that's pretty much a report in a nutshell. Happily, you know, during, I had a tour of the middle school, Harvard Union Middle School this week and this year they've had a very active PTO. The PTO helped fund their winter program. So very important role for parents. It's something that hadn't been, been here in a while. I don't think it had ever been. So having, having those parents involved, and that's the kind of community engagement we need and helping people feel good about the good things that we're doing with our schools and with our kids. And figuring, you know, and that's not something that we take lightly on the board. So just want to reiterate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. Yeah, it was a really good meeting, I thought. Shannon has a lot of ideas and she's really fleshed out a lot of the groundwork to do some of those ideas, which is pretty great. Okay. We're back to discussion, which we have three discussion points. A facilities update, which Lisa's partially given and will finish, and then reimbursement on ESSER, which she kind of covered. And then last is, we'll talk about board retreat ideas, but go ahead. You feel like you've covered it? Okay. All right, well, she really has. You got your updates. You got your ESSER funding. Bummer. We're waiting for that. So Ben, to discuss, we are going to have, our last meeting of the year is June 25th. It's the la, it's a Wednesday. We have booked the Mad River Barn again for dinner and our retreat, which is videoed, but it is not an agended meeting, so it's really kind of loose and we are there to talk and brainstorm about the year to come. And we discussed it in our leadership meeting that we'd really like board members to come to that meeting with some ideas and maybe if they have something they'd like to say about a given idea, that they be prepared to talk about it a little bit so we start to sort of shape maybe the outside pieces around the work we're doing all the time. Adding in, you know, possibly new policy, possibly, I mean, it could be any number of things. Dan mentioned AI at one point. That's something that is certainly in the air and... A1, I think it might be called in some places. Aye. So there's, you know, there's ideas out there. So as board members, those of you who are here, and we'll share this also with those who are not today, it's important that we all come with ideas. Because last time, last year when we did it, we really just were triaging our situation with the budget because it was just all packed in around each other. So knowing that, we should be thinking a little broader and a little bigger, you know. What, what do we want to do? Do we need a three to five-year plan? Do we need more new, do we need to look at different policy? Please think about that. Does anyone have any comments on that? Cindy, go ahead.
One of the things, this is sort of a part of this, actually. You'll notice in the leadership report, we always refer to a work plan, a board work plan, and it's a link, so you can go. It's a, it's a, it's an Excel spreadsheet that actually the group before us created. And it took me some time to kind of figure out moving that through. It really is, it's a work plan for the year. And obviously, in October, we don't have a hu, we didn't have a huge amount of stuff except just general things for March or May or whatever. But I'm beginning to get a feel for it a little bit better now and I've been thinking about this issue of us actually developing some kind of a plan or goal-setting, a sense of what are some of the things we want to focus on next year. And if we come up with some specific topics and some specific things that we as a board want to be sure we're including and working on next year, I'll create a column in that work plan for those particular goals. Goals is a funny word, I think somehow, but this plan, it's really part of a work plan for us and we're going to kind of create a work plan. And I see this retreat as our opportunity to begin to build the work plan that I'll then try and incorporate into that work plan that you get referred to in every leadership report. And it'll have more meaning for you. I don't think it has to, mostly I just take it off of the agendas now and I have filled it in, so it's up to date. But I really just use the agenda for how I set that up. Anyway, so, that's all.
Any other comments? Okay. So we're going to move on to action items ahead of schedule. Bummer. Okay. Right. Yep.
No, she's still here.
She's still here, sir.
I'm sorry, no, you, she's not voting, though. You would take her out.
I would.
Yeah, I don't leave her voting. She counts for attendance.
So yes, even though I, when I don't vote, which is every time generally, you take me out. Yeah.
And the only caveat to that is that...
Oh, sorry.
Is if we would be close on a quorum, she would have to vote. But if, but the, so we did some review of this and I discussed this with the school board's attorney just to make sure we were all right and following all the statutes. So the way the statutes work is we have to have a quorum of all 14 seats on the board. So if we had, like, we had vacancies, three vacancies last month. Even though they are vacancies, that counts in the, in the number towards a quorum. So we have to have over 50%, 50.1% in attendance to have a quorum. As long as you have a quorum, unless there's a specific exclusion, the board members who are in attendance as a quorum can take action on any item that comes up as a majority. So what makes it confusing, though, is this board uses percentages. Everyone has a percentage vote. So what you have to do, and I'll make the numbers clear, kind of clean, if we have 60% attendance of the board for the quorum, a yes vote of the 60% when Cindy pulls up the tally sheet would be more than 30% for an affirmative vote. So that's, that's where it gets a little confusing, but that's how the statute's written.
The last meeting was that there had been some discussion about whether I was supposed to zero people out of that percentage list that weren't here. So we had the numbers of people voting and it worked out percentage-wise that it was, it was fine. It was all okay. But, so I've been, I wanted to be sure I'm beginning, I'm getting this down right. On the tally sheets, which I'll share, and you'll see the tally sheets up there. So if you see something that you think needs to be corrected, please let me know.
Cashel?
I've been curious mainly like the whole year, how are the percent weights of board members' votes determined on the tally sheet of the towns?
Population they represent. So Waterbury's the biggest town, so they have four representatives, each with 9.75. And then the smallest town, Fiston, a more town maybe is 5%. So it's kind of a funny thing, but it was decided when they, when we merged under Act 46, right? That was the point when that was determined.
So the Articles of Agreement are very specific and talk about the methodology and the fact that they need to be updated after the census. So if you go back in the board minutes, I think it was 2021, the board took action to update each of the towns' percentages based on the 2020 census.
We're about to have some votes on our tally sheets. Is Mike Bishop here? I don't see him, so he's a zero. So is there any others that are zeros? I have the three that you let me know about in.
JB's here now, just in time to vote. Nice job. The people who are missing are Rebecca, Steve, Corey, Mike Bishop and Rob. Yep. Just in time to vote. Thank you, JB. Okay, I'm not going... Okay, so we have, we have a couple of action items here. One is we've had a request to fly the pride flag. Did everyone get a chance to take a look at that? Does anyone have any discussion or comment on the pride flag? Was that in an email that I missed? Built into the bottom of the agenda, there's a link basically that shows their letter and what they, what they give as to the hoops they jump through for that. Plus their... I don't think they have to, they don't, I'm not sure.
I see it now.
Okay, good. All right, so we've done this before. It's really great. It's a great group and they have all the requirements, so there's that piece for the act, that's an action item. Want to bring that one up? Okay, do, do any discussion? It's a pride flag, the rainbow pride flag.
No, pride.
Pride. Black Lives Do Matter, but this is not that flag. Okay, do I have a motion to accept the request to fly a flag?
Wait.
Yep, motion. Second? Bobby seconds. Okay, Emily seconds. We're going to take a tally vote. Starting with Ms. Celia Ling. We're going to start with Celia.
Yes.
There we go. Yep. Celia's a yes. Cashel?
Yes.
Ellie?
Yeah.
Brady?
Yeah.
Yep, Bobby? JB?
Yes.
Cindy? Jonathan?
Uh, yes, and Ashley, can I say, I would think in a situation like this, you could vote because it's not controversial and makes it very clear where you stand and where the board stands. So you might maybe consider in votes of this nature, maybe throw your vote in there.
Yeah, I was definitely planning on doing that. Don't worry. I promise. I will.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ben?
An enthusiastic yes.
Emily? And Pam? And Dan? And I am going to also cast my vote a yes.
Instead of Dan.
Dan's a yes and so am I. Okay, so there's...
You're out. Rob?
I don't see, not Mike. Oh, Rob and Mike. You should, yeah. It's okay. Take your time. It's okay. We're ahead of schedule. Okay, with that vote, that will pass. Yep. 64%. 100% was a unanimous vote with those who are here at the table. Thank you, everybody. We will let... Thank you, everybody. We will let the pride flag bearers know. Next is the approval of the copy machine bid that Lisa spoke about earlier. Does anyone have any questions or discussion on the copy machine savings that we're going to get? Dan?
Just curious, the document that you linked to, it has TBD for black and color pricing. Is that still TBD, or do you know what those are?
It's, the, what you're voting on tonight is not to exceed that number. And it is for 64 machines, which is all-inclusive. And the total price for them, the leasing is 179, 179,000... Hold this up and get my glasses on. 179,663 and 63 cents with an interest rate of 5.19. That, the black and white copies are still to be determined. But it's not, what we're voting on for the next five years is changing out those machines, devices, with, for 64 devices. We're reducing it by 51, and the number is not to exceed that number total. Sure. It's actually, should be in there already, what I sent you, the motion. That's in motion one. And we have to use that motion language based on IRS. We have to use that motion language.
Is there some mechanism in, in the copy machines that will track color? I mean, I just wondered how they're realizing these savings.
We have Autotrons, and we actually track color prints and black and white prints in each school. And that's how we were able to, the, our tech department is phenomenal, and they work with specialized purchase services. And we actually have a monthly meeting to go over the use of these machines. And that's how we were able to reduce 51 machines, because they're not being utilized enough. Or we can trade down if we have a high-speed machine in there with large capacity. We're able to reduce that to a lower, you know, per print machine. So, there's a significant cost savings, 165,000 over five years.
So, bear with me, I'm a little slow, but where do I see that number on the bid document that you linked to?
Keep going to the next page. Keep going.
Oh, it's not quite included? Hold on, let me open this up. Should be included in my link. There's two places for the link I plugged in. So, go back to my report. Go back to.
No, I know.
Oh.
Dan, if you go into my report, I didn't, in the copy bid portion, I didn't include that last page of the language. But in my report, there is a link that says copy your bid information. There is a page in there with the actual motion one and motion two. And that's the language that I have to use. Based on IRS.
Kidding me. Yeah, hold on. If it's not there, let me add it. I thought I included it. Yeah, but I thought I included this. Hold on. My apologies. Ellie will be long gone. She'll, she'll miss, she'll miss the good old days. Okay, does someone want to read this motion and make it, please?
I'm going to.
Cashel wants to read it.
Add that last page to that.
All right, Cashel's going to read it out. Somebody else make the motion. Bobby, make the motion. Cashel will read it. Go for it.
I hereby move that the board approves the proposal, the proposed tax-exempt lease with the MST Government Leasing LLC for the purpose of refinancing and funding photocopy equipment leases, including consultant fees and related costs of issuance of such leases in an amount not to exceed $179,663 and 63 cents, and an interest rate of 5.19% per year through August 1st, 2030.
Thank you. Bobby had made that motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
JB seconds. We're going to do a tally vote. Thank you, Cashel. Okay, Celia, how do you vote?
Yes.
Cashel?
Yes.
Ellie? Brady?
Yep.
Bobby? JB? Cindy, oh, sorry. Okay, that's Jonathan?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Emily? Yes. Pam? Dan?
Same.
Yep. Okay. Okay, that also passes with 64%. No, 47%. Right. 47%. Of 64%. Okay, that will pass. Right. Okay.
It just included motion, the suggested language, motion one and motion two, in my board report. So, it's there. Yep, no, motion two. Do you need me to cut and paste it for you? Okay.
Can someone? We're going to make a motion. Can you make that second motion, please? It is up there. Does someone want to make that motion? All right, Dan, will you make the motion, and Cashel can read it out?
Okay. I move that the board authorizes the superintendent to execute and deliver the tax-exempt lease with MST Government Leasing LLC on such terms and conditions discussed and provided to the board, and to execute and deliver any such documents required to execute the contract with Specialized Purchasing Consultants, Inc.
I have a second. Okay, JB seconds, and we are going to do a tally vote. Oh, yeah. Do you want to discuss? Go ahead.
Assuming that this language is what is standard, and we've used this in the past.
Yes, this, and this is actually the required language required by IRS to use for this process for when you're using a purchasing consultant.
Right, so I just want to make sure I understand. We're voting on the language? I'm a little confused about what this vote is about.
Right, so the copy bid, machine bid lease for the next five years is the first motion for a total of 179,663 and 63 cents. It, that's not to exceed, plus an interest rate of five, uh, five... Thank you. Percent. So, it's, it's a motion to move forward with National as our bid.
So, the first, the first vote was, yes, we authorize, we authorize this lease for the five-year period. This one is authorizing the superintendent to execute the lease with the company.
Thank you very much for that clarification, because until just now, this is very confusing.
Well, nothing against the lawyers in the room, but you can tell this is, this is a legal document that was written with very specific terms.
Good question, you know, ask questions. Okay, we're going to vote. You ready, Cindy? All right, Celia?
Yes.
Cashel?
Yes.
Ellie?
Yes, and Cindy, I think you accidentally changed Bobby's percentage to one.
Same as JB. Point seven. Oh, low blow, Ben. See you outside on the playground. Nope. Uh, Brady?
Yes.
JB?
Yes.
Cindy? Jonathan?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Emily? Yes. Pam? And Dan?
Yes.
Yep. Okay, that is unanimous, and that will pass. Thank you. Yep, got that. Okay. We've approved the copy machine big, bid and the pride flag. Okay, the last piece of the agenda is the consent agenda. That is when we group a whole bunch of business together. That is kind of like the business of the district, like writing checks, and we lump it all together with things like field trips, that a lot of the legwork is already done by admin. It's not really our, it, we'll read it through, then we vote on it. So, this one, the consent agenda, is the minutes. We're going to approve the minutes from 416. We're going to approve board warrants from 423 in the amount of $575,118.01 and from 57 for $551,844.59 for a total of 1.1 million 26,926.60. We're also going to approve the 2526 Rwanda trip request and the new staff for 2526. Do we have any discussion before we make a motion? Any questions? Okay, can I have a motion, please?
You do accept the consent agenda.
Do I have a second? All right, Emily seconds. Let's, all those in favor, say aye. Aye? Okay. That is that. Now, um... Okay, then we're looking for a motion to adjourn. So, move, Dan moves second. Second from Ben, all those in favor, aye. All right.
Motion for a barbecue at JB's house?